I go to Princeton University, majoring in psychology.
I go to Harvard and I'm majoring in economics.
I'm going to Duke and I'm majoring in psychology and global health.
I'm going to Johns Hopkins and I'm majoring in chemistry.
Our advantage, great teachers and programs at Orange County Public Schools. See what's possible for you.
There are magnet programs, advanced placement and honors classes, and guidance counselors who help us choose the right courses. You can even earn college credit while in high school.
OCPS has programs for every type of learner.
Orange County Public Schools, leading students to success.
All right, well, good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for coming to the Orange County School Board tonight. This is, in our minds, the last official board meeting of our year because, just like our educators in the room, our year tends to run, in our minds at least, on the school calendar. So if we seem particularly gleeful and happy tonight, just relate us to your teachers in the last day of school at your schools. We're so glad to have you all tonight. We have quite a few recognitions to do tonight as well. And the first one has to do with our Facilities Department and right here in Orange County Public Schools. And it's not a coincidence that I'm wearing a green tie tonight. And you see a bunch of green in the room. It's because we're going to recognize some green initiatives and also some of the cost savings that our Facility Department and our utility partners have helped us achieve in Orange County Public Schools. As many of you may know as well, in just a few months, we will be out there on the ballot asking the voters to extend the sales tax for the construction and renovation of our schools and to finish the job that we set about in this community back in 2002 and that we have not yet completed, but that we have all seen the benefits of over the last 12 years. So we would ask for your support of that as well. Joining us tonight, which is an initiative that we hope will help engender even more support for that ballot initiative, are representatives from Duke Energy, our utility providers, and Metro Plan Orlando, our region's transportation planning organization. And again, we hope that this presentation will help folks feel confident in some of the steps that we're taking here in our Facilities Department. Chief Facilities Officer in a moment, John Morris. Not sure where John is, but he'll join us in a second. Well, I'll tell you a little bit more about the Energy. There you are, John. Efficiency efforts. And we are joined tonight on the phone by Pam Gould as well, one of our school board members. As you can see, we're a little bit light up here at the front table. So before I go any further, let me ask Mark Clinch from our Facilities Department. He's our Director of Construction to join us at the podium and lead us in the moment of silence and the pledge, please. Mark?
Please stand and bow your heads for a moment of silence. Thank you. And now the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
Thank you, Mark, for leading us in that. As part of his duties, Mr. Clinch oversees a Facilities Department's sustainability efforts, including our energy rebate program. Mark Clinch has been with OCPS since 2005. Among many other credentials, he is a Lead Green Associate and Lead Globes Professional. Of course, Lead, as you all know, is a designation for green facilities as a national credentialing agency for that. Mr. Clinch is also the proud father of two Lake Nona High School students, one now in college, and the other, a rising junior. He is also a 22-year veteran of the United States Navy Seabees, which I'm sure many of you know, but for those who do not, is a construction arm of our Navy. Mark, thank you in particular for your service to our country. We really appreciate that very, very much. At this time, I'm going to ask our Chief Facilities Officer, Mr. John Morris, to please join us at the podium and introduce our guest. Mr. Morris?
Mr. Chairman, Board Members, and Superintendent Jenkins, my pleasure tonight to say a few words about these presentations. We actually have two presentations resulting from efficiencies and green efforts that OCPS Facilities has done along with operations. It's kind of a collaborative effort between us and operations when we start looking at energy efficiencies and air quality issues. You've heard a little bit about Mark. He is superb at what he does and the efficiencies. He really gets into it, talks to a lot of people, a lot of national organizations out there. We're all about green schools and what's going on across the country. And we stay in pretty good standing across the country with what we're doing with our facilities program. The other individual is John Brennan. John is in our Maintenance Department as an Energy Administration Manager. And John's the one that analyzes what's going on in the schools, the Energy Star Program. We get a lot of outside sources that come and say, "We can do it better than you can." And John analyzes that stuff. And at the end of the day, they can't do it better than we can. We have a lot of people that are dedicated to energy efficiency in our schools. The third person I'd like to introduce is Jennifer Fowler. She's the Director of Environmental Compliance. And Jennifer has really toed the line, so to speak, for the school district on the clean air quality issues in our schools. It's a big issue, you know, with the schools that we have, the portables that we have. It's a big issue to deal with clean air and make sure the students have a good environment to learn in. Our first presentation tonight is with Duke Energy, Government Community Relations Manager Debbie Clemens and Account Executive Wendell Hines. They join us tonight with a big check. You've seen it. We're going to show the audience again because we're pretty proud of that check. It's been a great program. It's been a great collaboration between the school district and Duke Energy. The other award that I'd like to hold up is this award right here. And this is the Power, 2013 Power Partner Award to Orange County Public Schools on behalf of Duke Energy. That Power Partner Program is set up nationally. And Duke Energy recognizes 18 organizations nationally for that, which is a contribution and collaboration with the energy programs that Duke Energy has. The savings achieved by OCPS equates to planting about 721 trees, keeping 1,000 cars off the road, or removing 7.5 million pounds of carbon from the atmosphere. So along with the check and the rebate program, which I'm going to get back to in just a minute, we have a Power Partner Program going also. Getting back to the check, we shouldn't say "we." Mark, really, has been heading up this rebate program with Duke Energy. And it's ongoing and it's growing. This check is $1.4 million. It's above that now in the rebate program. So it's continuing. Every school that we complete, we get additional rebate. So with that and talking about the check, I'd like to bring Wendell and Debbie back up again and show the check off and if they have a few words they'd like to say. Thank you.
We'll let Wendell be the model. He's younger. Chairman, Sublet, and Board Members, it is a great pleasure to be here. And we thank you for this opportunity. I mean, John and I get to speak, but it really is the hard work of Mark and Wendell and those with kind of their boots on the ground that have made this happen over several years. And as John said, the dividends continue to pay. This isn't the end. More money has since been paid out. It will continue because of the hard work and diligence. And this Power Partner Award, it was highly coveted. We are the largest electric utility in the country. So to be one of 18 companies nationally that's recognized is quite an honor. And just again, thank you very much for this opportunity to recognize their hard work. And also keep in mind, the dividends pay off every month because your energy bills, you're realizing savings every month that you wouldn't otherwise have with lower energy bills as well. So this really understates the impact to the school board. So thank you very much.
I know we'd like to shake our hands. Wendell, I'd rather have Debbie as a model for the check myself. And every time I see one of these, I don't know if anybody here is a popular movie fan. I'm always reminded of Talladega Nights, Ballad of Ricky Bobby. I always want to drive through a drive-through and try to deposit one of those. And let me, before I go back to John, just say one word. Wow, Mark, that's very, very impressive. And Debbie, thank you for Duke's partnership with OCPS. And thank you, Wendell, as well. $1.4 million goes an awful long way in Orange County Public Schools, both in terms of retaining teachers and educating our students and outfitting our classrooms. So thank you very, very much for that. John?
Thank you. Also tonight with us is Cynthia Lambert. And she's with the Public Information Manager with Metro Plan Orlando, the region's transportation planning organization. OCPS is the winner of the Metro Plan's 2014 Clean Air Award. Metro Plan cited the district's combination of technology, policy outreach, and operating efficiency in having a major positive impact on our region's air quality. Specifically, they recognized our biopolar ionization projects. This air purification technology installed at eight district construction projects leaves energy by reducing, excuse me, saves energy by reducing the amount of air conditioning needed and improves the quality of the indoor air. Metro Plan also lauded the district's transportation program, which includes the use of biodiesel fuel, more efficient bus routes, and a non-idling policy to save fuel and emissions. Ms. Lambert, will you come up and be recognized? Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm so happy to be here today to be able to present the 2014 Clean Air Award to you all. It's a pleasure to be able to personally thank you and your staff because they've worked so hard for leading the clean air charge here in central Florida. Your organization touches so many families in our region. And even more importantly, your schools are where so many young people will form their ideas about what's really important for our area, not only here in this region, but for the world beyond. And as a product of the OCPS system, myself, I can certainly attest to that. Your commitment to a greener and more sustainable region really sets the tone for the future. So thank you for that. It's interesting that the story of clean air is often told by the things that aren't there and by the things that don't happen. I'd like to just take a brief minute to talk about what the OCPS commitment to good air quality means and brag on your accomplishments a little bit here. Because if the story of clean air is really about what's missing and what isn't happening, then you have a very stellar story to tell to the community. It's a story of more than $2 million that hasn't been spent in the past year because you've incorporated energy efficiencies. And as Chairman just noted, that goes a long way with the district. It's the story of all the carbon dioxide emissions that aren't being spewed into our region's air because of your responsible policies. And that's more than 16 million pounds avoided in the past year. Very impressive. And perhaps the most important part of your story is that you've created a culture of sustainability and environmental responsibility throughout all the schools in the district. And we truly believe that the education piece of your clean air strategy really has the greatest potential for good in the long term. So as was mentioned, Metro Plan Orlando, my employer is the region's long-range transportation planning organization here in central Florida. And we depend on organizations like yours to help us get the message out that our transportation system has to be sustainable. So I'm very personally impressed that your Transportation Department has avoided thousands of gallons of diesel fuel consumption each month. And that translates directly into dollars for the district. So I'd like to extend my compliments to Mark. Thank you for submitting the award entry and letting us know about all the wonderful things happening at OCPS. So to the school board members and to all the employees who have a hand in this program, you should be proud of what your organization has accomplished. And we want you to know that the region is proud of you as well. So it's my pleasure to present you with the 2014 Clean Air Award. Thank you.
Just a final comment, Mr. Chairman, Board Members. Saving money, creating healthy environments, and teaching our students to be good stewards of our planet is a result of a commitment and teamwork. Thanks to our partners in operations and instruction for making this a success. It's a very successful program. Thank you.
Ms. Lambert, thank you very, very much on behalf of the board. And Wendell and Debbie, thank you again so much on behalf of the board. We're so proud of all of our environmental efforts. And I think I speak for all of us on this board. Not a month goes by that we don't have some young person want to sit down with us and talk about how our schools can be greener. So it's wonderful, Mark, under your leadership, that we're doing all that we can possibly think of. But there's always more that we can do. So please let us know how we can make our schools even greener because it is very, very important, not just to us, but to the future of our entire community. Thank you very, very much. We are going to, Board Members, right now, go into Administrator Recognitions. And Debbie and Wendell and Cynthia, if you'd like to go to your families. Never figured out how or a way to say it tactfully, but if you want to leave, that's okay. And, you know, I have to tell you, it's a tough crowd, Dr. Jenkins. I can tell that school's already out and summer's already started. It's the most subdued group of administrators I've seen in a long time. But it's good to know that it's summertime for them as well. And Dr. Jenkins, let me turn it over to you for our recognitions.
Thank you, Chairman. We have six appointments of brand-new principals or assistant principals to share with you. I would also mention to the board, the remaining few appointments that have to be made, we will make those retroactively in July. Certainly be in touch with individual board members in the interim. A couple of interview groups are still working this week on their selections and recommendations. First, we have Elizabeth Smith, who was the Administrative Dean at Boone High School. She will be the new Assistant Principal at Boone High School.
Chairman, Sublet, Mr. Roach, Superintendent Jenkins, Dr. Jarra, and your staff, and of course, Mr. Rudzik and Dr. Cupid McCoy. I want to thank you for this opportunity. Dr. McMillan and our administrative team and my family, I want to thank you for your support. And I'm looking forward to my new role, being part of the best team at Boone High School.
Hang on a second. So I know we told you to be brief, but you can actually introduce any family and friends that are here to support you.
My husband, Bill Smith, my daughter, Haley Had, my mom, Jean Frye, my sister, Elaine Matthews, Dr. McMillan, Miss Iglesias, Miss Jackson, and Mr. Anderson. Thank you.
And Ms. Smith, I know as a Boone parent, you have a sense of humor, but I just want you to know that the superintendent just bailed you out with Mr. Smith there.
Board Members, we in fact encourage appointees, make the majority of your 30 seconds of fame for recognizing family and mentors. So let's try it with Sarah Begalki now. Assistant Principal at Molly Ray Elementary is the new principal at Lake Silver Elementary.
Thank you. Thank you so much to Nancy Robinson, my school board member, Dr. Jenkins, Dr. Jarra, Miss Schuler, Dr. Gordon, Dr. Gruber, Dr. Fritzler. Thank you so much for giving me this honor and responsibility. Thank you to those who have mentored me, John Dobbs, Lori Butler, Deondra Woodard, Mark Shanoff. To my friends and to my family, I have my aunt here. My parents are on a flight out of the country. Who would have guessed this would happen tonight when they booked their flights? And finally, to the Lake Silver community. I am extremely eager to work with them, doing what's best for our students. Thank you.
Next, we have Cynthia Haupt, who is Assistant Principal at Westridge Middle. She will be the new principal of Lee Middle School.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Ms. Robinson, Dr. Jenkins, Dr. Jarra, Dr. Gordon, Dr. Gruber. I think I got all the doctors. Thank you so much for this opportunity. I'm so excited. I cannot wait to get to the north and start at Lee Middle School. Mr. Rudzik, Ms. Gordon, Dr. Cupid McCoy, who I saw. She's in here somewhere. Thank you for your leadership and your guidance. Let's see, Dr. Camato, thank you. Principal of Westridge Middle School, thank you for the last two years for your leadership and support. To my new Lee family, thank you for being here. Thank you, Ms. Carls, Ms. Perry, Ms. Brown. Dr. Barrio, current principal of Timber Creek, past principal of Westridge. Thank you for your mentorship and your guidance and your leadership. And to my children, Derek and Emma. Love you. Thank you for being here.
Next, we have Kenesha Holmes, who is Assistant Principal at Deerwood Elementary. She will be the new principal of Brookshire Elementary.
Thank you, Chairman, Bill Sublet. My school board member from District One, Jody Cadel, who cannot be here tonight. Thank you, Deputy, I'm sorry, Superintendent Dr. Barbara Jenkins and your staff. I also would like to say thank you to my mom for being here tonight. You've supported me through this journey. I love you very much. Thank you to all my friends, my family. I have my sisters here, my three beautiful children, Cameron, Kamaya, Yasmin. I did this all for you. Principal McHale, what can I say? This has been the best two years of my educational career. You are a rock star. I love you and my Deerwood family. And I miss you guys very much. I look forward to being competitive with you in the East because we're going to rock you again. And thank you so much to my Brookshire family. I look forward to working with you. Thank you so much, everyone.
Paul Maldonado is Assistant Principal at Winter Park High School. He will be the new principal at Howard Middle School.
First, I would like to thank Chairman Sublet, Joy Cadel, Nancy Robinson, and Dr. Jenkins for your support. I'm honored to have the opportunity to lead such a prestigious and highly regarded middle school such as Howard. This day would not be possible without my mentors, including the area superintendents, Tim Smith, Dave Stanley, and Judy Frank. I'd also like to thank my wife, Kelly Maldonado, who is also a principal, and my two boys, Gabriel and Jacob, who are with their grandparents in Tennessee at the moment. My mother is not able to be here tonight, but I know she is looking down from heaven with pride. Thank you.
Finally, we have Christine Skamansky, who is Assistant Principal at Wendy Ridge KH. He will be the new principal at Metro West Elementary.
Thank you. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the members of the school board, including Pam Gould, my school board member, Dr. Jenkins, Dr. Bridgette Williams. Most importantly, my family who's here tonight, my daughters, Emily and Brianna, my husband, Eric, and my many friends and mentors and colleagues who came out to support me tonight, including Sheila Johnson, my most current principal, and my new team at Metro West. Thank you so much for bringing me, on board and welcoming me. And again, I look forward to serving the community of Metro West Elementary.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. Mrs. Robinson?
Okay, so College Park, all the principals went up in the air and they all fell down. And we've got two fabulous new principals in the College Park area. And I'm so excited. Cindy, I've enjoyed my time that I've met you today. And I look forward to many, many, many more times seeing you. As I live right around the corner from you, I'll be dropping in all the time. And the Lee families are just going to love you. And your faculty that showed up tonight, I've already told you, they're fabulous. So we're excited, very excited for you. Congratulations. And Sarah, it's been a long time and I'm so excited. You finally got back to the north. When you left us from Lake West, and I knew you'd come back to the north. So congratulations at Lake Silver. The College Park community, once again, is just going to be so excited. And I know you have some supporters nodding their heads. Very exciting. And Mr. Maldonado, I've now got the dynamic duo. I've got a husband-wife duo in District Six. Kelly's at Azalea Park and Paul's at Howard Middle School. So I'm excited to have a husband-wife duo there. I'm so excited for you, Paul, and it's going to be a lot of fun. I know you've got your supporters over there that you've already met. They're amazing. Howard is a special, special place. And I was telling you all, he already invited me to the first presentation, the big production in the fall. I'm very excited. That's one of my most favorite things to do, is go to Howard for all their wonderful productions. So I'm really, really excited for you. And I know you're going to just carry on Carl's legacy. He's done a lot of great things in the last 10 years. We're going to miss him, but he'll be watching. And he'll be there in case we need him. But it's really exciting. And Elizabeth, back there, you're not coming to District Six. I did not recognize you. Our kids, we did the mom thing together at Lake Silver many, many years ago. Congratulations. I'm so excited for you. Didn't know you were going to be here tonight. Didn't recognize the name. That's what threw me. So anyway, congratulations to everybody. It's a great time of year, a lot of fun when people get to move up and get their own schools. It's a great time. So congratulations. I look forward to seeing great things. Thanks.
Ms. Gould, are you there?
I just want to, I am, I'm here.
Thank you for calling in.
Oh, my pleasure. I wanted to congratulate Ms. Sniski, our new principal for Metro West. I know she knows the area well. She's going into a great community. And congratulations. I'm sorry you didn't see me clapping in my chair here, but I look forward to working with you in this coming year.
Thank you, Ms. Gould. Well, on behalf of the board, I just want to say congratulations again. Dr. Jenkins, Mr. Roach, I'm sorry, I didn't see you push a button. Mr. Roach?
That's okay. Thank you, Mrs. Robinson there for the, listen, Ms. Smith, congratulations to you, Assistant Principal Smith at Boone High School. I think it's fabulous. That's a very special school to me, having worked there as a Boone Brave. And the three of my, the Roach boys graduating from there. And I think you're going to fit in just great. What a great, traditional, historic high school that you're coming into there. So my very best to you. And Mr. Maldonado, that, Howard used to be a school where a lot of my constituents used to go. But what a turnaround that school has been. And I'm just very, very excited that you're there. And I know you're getting a lot of support because when the Howard faculty comes out to support you, that's a good thing. Because I know that Mr. Cartwright, Dr. Cartwright, was an incredible, credible principal there. But you're going to do fine. And I think he left it in good shape for you. That used to be a school we had a hard time getting people to go to. Now we can't keep them away from the doggone place. And the waiting list just continues to grow. So good for you. And I'm very proud of you and all the other administrators that were hired tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roach. Well, I was going to say, Dr. Jenkins, I just want to thank you and your area superintendents. I don't recall in my four years on the board us having to fill as many difficult-to-fill principal positions. And difficult because a number of the new principals here tonight are coming in and filling the shoes or going to attempt to fill the shoes of some principals whose communities just love them. And I have to share with my community friends out there, and there's quite a few faces I recognize out there who are parents. This may surprise you, but whenever that happens, we up here view that as a very, very good problem. Because we love it when parents take ownership of a principal and get upset when that principal leaves, either to advance her careers or retires or whatever it may be, because it shows that they've been a brilliant leader and that they've engaged their parent bases. For our newly appointed principals, I just want to say good luck on behalf of the board. On a more serious note, I share every time we appoint new principals and assistant principals that this appointment, your family and loved ones should know is a very high honor because it symbolizes one very simple word on behalf of this board and administration. And that word is trust. It shows that this administration, this board trusts your leadership abilities. It shows that it trusts your judgment. And more importantly, and most importantly, it shows that we trust you with our community's children. So all of your families, friends, colleagues, and loved ones should be very, very proud of your accomplishment tonight. And we certainly, on the Orange County School Board, are extremely proud of you. Congratulations. And with that, we're going to pause so you can go home and enjoy. And with that, we're going to pause, so you can go home and enjoy your summer. Although I know you're all are working still, but still, enjoy your evening with no school tomorrow.
No school, I said.
Let me make a couple of, let me make a couple of preliminary announcements. Anybody who would like to address an item on our consent or our non-consent agenda may do so by completing, completing a yellow form that looks like this. You can get this form up here at the, the board table from Ms. McGill, which is the lady at the far left-hand side of the dais, in the beautiful green suit for environmentalism today. I will call you to speak when the item you have signed up for is before, before us. If you have any schedule constraints, please let us know, and we'll try to accommodate those. As we go through presentations, if we have them, for example, we're about to have, I believe, some on the, the rezonings. The board members have a monitor in front of them, so if it appears as if we're not following it on the screen behind us, that's because we're following the presentations on our own monitors in front of us. So with that, let me turn to Dr. Jenkins and ask you if we have any changes to our agenda tonight.
We do, Mr. Chairman. Addendum to public hearing item 3.01. The agenda item was added after the release of the board book. Item 4.01 Personnel Agenda, there is a revised addendum and the removal of employee GM classified to be brought forward at a later meeting. Addendum item 1405, the attachments were added after the release of the book. The same is true of item 1406. Item 1407 is being withdrawn to be brought forth at a later date. Addendum item 1408, the resolution was attached after the release of the board book.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. The Chair finds cause to amend the agenda suggested by Dr. Jenkins. Could I have a motion to do so? It's been moved by Ms. Moore. It's been seconded by Mr. Roach. Is there any debate or discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Should the agenda amended? Dr. Jenkins, before we go on any further, I, I just wanted to reinforce what I said a little bit earlier, now everybody's gone. Truly, I want to commend your staff. Those were some difficult principalships to fill this year. Those were some schools with some extremely engaged parent populations that felt great ownership over their previous principal and great pride in their schools. So I want to thank you. I hate to single out any area administrator, but I'm going to on this one because he's retiring, and he kept telling me he had his triple crown of principal replacements this year because he had three extremely high parental involvement schools with three very popular principals. And I just think, John, you did a remarkable job, Mr. Rudzik, in filling those, those, those positions. And that's not to ignore any of our other area superintendents. Dr. Martinez, I know you had some as well, and I'm sure, and I'm probably forgetting one or two that you and Dr. Gordon had, but, and Dr. Williams may have had, but thank you for filling those so adroitly and adeptly. It helps us in our seat up here a lot when you all make good picks for us. So thank you, Dr. Jenkins, for your leadership on that. With that, I'm going to turn it over to you to take us into agenda item 3.01, which are the, the rezonings that we have to address tonight. Dr. Jenkins.
Thank you, Chairman. We have staff prepared with brief summaries of those rezonings. I'd like to remind the general public that we have had work sessions and workshops on these previously. The board has been exposed to them, and we have had previous public input as well. With that, we will have Carol McGowan with our pupil assignment staff take over.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. At this time, I'd like to take a moment to introduce the rest of the staff for pupil assignment. We have Stacy Neal and Renata Peropshe. This public hearing is step 10 of the rezoning process. The second page of your handout is the, is not working, okay, is the timeline that we have followed through the rezoning process. This evening, we bring to you 11 rezonings, nine technical rezonings that involve no students, and three targeted rezonings that do involve students. If approved, the rezoning changes would commence with the 2014-15 school year. We will present each individually for you to discuss. For each proposed rezoning, you have two maps, one, a close-up of the geographic area under consideration, and the other shows the proposed new school zones. A technical rezoning generally is requested when the property is divided between two schools, or there is an infrastructure issue and no students are involved. There has been no input received for any of the proposed rezonings, technical rezonings presented tonight. Our first two technical rezonings are for one property, the Beltway Commerce Center. One impacts the elementary schools, the other impacts the high schools. If you look at your map, the red lines are going to show you the current elementary zone. The area in yellow is the Beltway Commerce Center. Currently, this area is owned for Andover Elementary. Due to the current infrastructure, the recommendation is to move Beltway Commerce Center from Andover Elementary to Hidden Oaks Elementary. Our next map shows the proposed new school zones. The area in green is Andover, and the area in pink would be the new Hidden Oaks Zone. Mr. Chair, we're ready for discussion?
All right, board members, any comments or questions on the technical rezonings? Okay. I don't have any cards, but let me just ask, has anybody from the public showed up tonight to testify on any of these technical rezonings? I, I will get to the speaker cards in a moment on the, the targeted rezonings. I have one on Pittman Estates, and I have one, I'm not sure what the other one is on. Ms. Forty, you're not here on either of the technical rezonings, are you? Or is Victoria Forty? I know you're not. Okay. Okay. All right, seeing none. Ms. McGowan, what's your pleasure? Do you want us to take these up as a whole, which is what my intention was, or do you want us to take separate motions on each of these? What do we need to do, Mr. Rodriguez? I thought we would just take them up as a whole.
You can certainly do that.
Okay. Unless there's any disagreement on one of them by a board member, then we'll separate them out if there is.
Okay. I'll continue on then.
All right, thank you.
Our next one is, again, the Beltway Commerce Center. The recommendation here, since this is the high school dividing line, is to move Beltway Commerce from the university zone to Colonial High School. If you look at the next map, you'll see the proposed university in green, and Colonial is in pink.
Is here to talk about this technical rezoning? All right, board members, any questions, comments? All right, Dr. McGowan.
Our next rezoning is Butler Preserve. The area in yellow is Butler Preserve. It is currently divided between the Wendy Ridge School Zone and Ecclestone School Zone. The recommendation is to move the area that is currently zoned to Wendy Ridge to the Ecclestone Zone.
All right, again, is anybody here from the public here to talk about the Butler's Preserve technical rezoning? Seeing none, board members, questions or comments? Seeing none, Ms. McGowan?
Yes. Our next one is Canopy Oaks. The school zone line is red, the representative division in the elementary. The yellow in area is the Canopy Oaks neighborhood. Currently, this area is owned for both Sun Ridge and Lake Whitney Elementary. The majority of the development is within the Lake Whitney Zone, and the recommendation is to move the area currently zoned to Sun Ridge to Lake Whitney. If this rezoning is approved, the area in green would be the new Lake Whitney Zone, the area in pink would be the new Sun Ridge Zone. Mr. Sablet.
Thank you, Ms. McGowan. Is anybody here to speak on the proposed Canopy Oaks technical rezoning? Seeing none, board members, comments, questions? Seeing none, Ms. McGowan.
Yes, sir. Our next is the Courtney at Lake Shadow. The area in yellow is the Courtney at Lake Shadow. Currently, the area is owned for both Lake Seville and Hungerford Elementary Schools. The majority of the project is in the Lake Seville Zone, and the recommendation is to move the section of the neighborhood currently zoned to Hungerford to Lake Seville. If this rezoning is approved, the area in pink would be the new Hungerford Zone, the area in green would be Lake Seville.
Thank you. All right, any members of the public here to speak on the Courtney at Lake Shadow technical rezoning? Seeing none. Ms. Moore, was, did you punch a button on this one or a future one?
No, I was just going to make the motion, and I was inquiring about how to put it all together, but as soon as we're done with all the technicals, I'll be happy to make it.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Moore. All right, Ms. McGowan.
Our next technical rezoning is Lake Doe Reserve. This area involves middle school, so the boundary line that you see is in green. The yellow in area is the last phase of the Lake Doe Reserve. The area in hash marks beneath it is mostly Camp Weewah for the YMCA. The recommendation is that the area in yellow in the hash mark be moved from Apo, I'm sorry, Wolf Lake Middle School to Apopka Middle School.
Thank you. Any members of the public to speak on the Lake Doe Reserve technical rezoning? Seeing none, board members, questions? Yes, sir. And what I'm going to do, sir, is go ahead and have you state your name and address for the record, and I'll have you fill out a yellow card after you're done speaking.
Will do. Thank you. Jimmy Dunn, representing the owner of Florida Land Holdings 10. The address is 14 South Main Street, Winter Garden, Florida. We didn't receive notice of this change. I'm actually here for another agenda item tonight, so this is kind of a surprise to us. Do notices usually get delivered for these changes? They do not. How does the public become aware of the changes?
Ms. McGowan, would you like to answer that, or Mr. Rodriguez, Ms. McGowan?
We advertise within the Sentinel. We do, we post our timeline online. We also post when we have the superintendent's meeting, community meeting, the rural development workshop, and then the public hearing. It's all been noticed in the newspaper.
All right, thank you very much. It's just tough having this just thrown on you, and, you know, not a mailer go out directly. We own probably 90% of the lots in that subdivision. The rest is owned by a home builder. I mean, personally, I'd just like to have this table to the next meeting, if that's okay.
All right, thank you, Mr. Dunn.
Thank you.
Ms. Moore, why don't you sit in the front row, if you could, for a second, Mr. Dunn, while we see what Ms. Moore has to say, and other board members. Ms. Moore?
Well, I just, I guess I was wondering if you were concerned about it, because I know they made me aware of this particular change, that the elementary zone is Apopka Elementary, so the majority of those students go to Apopka Middle School, and right now there's more capacity at Apopka Middle School. Carol can probably correct me if I don't have this correct, and I think we're even, Dr. Gordon, anticipating the school grade will probably be higher at Apopka Middle School, I think, this year. So maybe it could help understand. Do you have some concerns about the switch, or just the notification?
No concerns with the switch, just the notification process was more my concern. So.
All right, thank you, Mr. Dunn.
Thank you.
Mr. Rodriguez, or Ms. McGowan, either one, probably you, Mr. Rodriguez. If we were to table this to a date certain, say, the next board meeting, is that even a possibility? Or we have to re-advertise, or do we have to start the process anew on the 12-step process?
Mr. Chair and members of the board, just remember that tonight is really the, the last step in a long, long process. It's literally a 13-step process in which you go through. So your approval or rejection tonight of this particular measure will, will decide that if you were to delay that vote, it would certainly, at the minimum, require additional public notice and notification. Given the timeframes, it would be no earlier than July, but typically, we have never extended the vote. We have taken the vote up or down as a board, and if it's been rejected for some reason of the public, then you essentially have asked Ms. McGowan and her crew to go back to the drawing board, begin that public process again. And on these technical rezonings, they're technical for a reason, because there's, there's little to no opposition, and it's in the best interest of the district, as well as the students that are impacted by that.
All right. Well, why don't we do this, board members, and speak up if you would have any objection to what I'm about to say. Mr. Dunn, this caught us a little bit off guard, because by the time we get to this point, that's through no fault of yours, sir, at all. By the time we get to this point, we've been through a couple of public hearings on this already, and I've been doing this four years, and I just learned something new this evening. So what I'd like to suggest to you, sir, is since you're an affected, sounds like home builder or developer in this area?
Developer.
Developer in this area, is I think the will of the board would probably be to go forward tonight, but why don't you sit down and look at this issue, and you have my commitment that if you have an issue with the zoning for these as-yet undeveloped lots, come back to me, make an appointment with me through Ms. McGill, and you have my commitment that we'll bring it back up, and if we have to do another technical rezoning to address your concerns, or if we have to have a work session or a hearing on your concerns, you have my commitment we'll do that and see if the will of the board is to, to, to change it. Otherwise, we have to start the process all over when you may decide after you study it that you're fine with it.
Understood.
Is that fair enough to you, sir?
That's fair enough. Thank you.
And I'm sorry you didn't get notice. I learned something new again tonight with technical rezonings, but that's my field not status.
I learned as well, so something new, but thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Moore?
Kind of, I could inquire, in terms of when we go through the technical rezoning process, how we do notify the developer or the builder? How are they made aware of this so that we maybe can avoid that problem in the future?
Ms. Moore, and generally, we do our notices within the newspaper, and if developers come to us at some point, then they keep in contact with us, but we do not do a special notification for the developers.
So, you, Mr. Rodriguez?
Can I just add, I'm sorry, the other concern too is, while some developers may be better known in the community because they're companies or organizations or such that they do significant amounts of business, there are a number of companies that just, from the nature of the holdings, you wouldn't be able to tell who to really notify. So I think it's a difficult burden on the organization if we're going to have to try and identify who is the right person, and we're going to have to track them down through SunBiz or some other measures. So usually, there are developers that come forward. We know about it, as they're going through that process, they're made aware of these changes, so.
Ms. Moore, and then Mr. Roach.
Well, but when you go through our, our government department with Tyrone and Julie, they, they, they really keep up quite well, you know, with applicants through the process, so I'm not so sure why there couldn't be a little better collaboration between that department and pupil assignment. Because I think it, it is an issue to them. They, they need to be sure they're aware, and I'm not sure we, any of us goes through the newspaper and reads the legals. I mean, we just don't. So I think most of the time, I think they usually know about it because they're, they're, they're somewhat involved in the process, but it doesn't seem like it would be that difficult if we went through Mr. Howard's department.
Ms. Moore, just, it just, the equity issue is the only thing I'd be concerned about, because for those that we are aware of and can contact, we might be able to make contact for those, but those we can't, because we just don't know. We'll have to research it with, I guess, Tyrone and Mr. Howard's department, so.
Mr. Roach.
Well, I think though, the
Well, I think, though, that he clearly has identified a gap in the communication process. That's for sure, and I'd like to see us make the effort to see if we could do something about it. The fact that he owns the land seems to me like that would be one easy, easy spot, is simply ask that question in the process, who owns the land? And if that question had have been asked, Mr. Dunn wouldn't have been here tonight. So, let's make an effort to look at it, rather than just say it's complicated, and it's, let's see how that might work, and maybe involve him in the process on how that would happen. Otherwise, I fear that we, this will happen again, and I agree with Mrs. Moore. I've never been a big fan that people are going to look to the newspaper in the legal section and look for this particular thing to pop up. So, I feel a little bit embarrassed on my part as a board member that the owner of the property didn't know that somehow. That doesn't, that doesn't sit right with me. That'd be my, and I think, Mr. Seblat, I like your idea. I think that's very kind of you, and I hope you follow through with that, but I think, I'd also like to see some kind of effort made toward how could we do it? And then if it comes out that it's impossible to do, then so be it, but let's at least think that we might be able to handle it.
Yeah, I agree. So, we will address that, and we'll tee that up for the fall to look if we need to take a look at that process. Ms. McGowan, if you'll remind me, I mean, I won't forget. Mr. Dunn, just come back to me now. Ms. McGowan, can I ask you something about this one?
Yes, sir.
Before we move off of it?
Yes, sir.
If I'm reading the documents correctly, and if I recall right from our previous hearings, this is to zone in an additional phase of an existing subdivision into the same school zone as the rest of the subdivision?
That is correct, sir.
Okay. And, Mr. Dunn, as you sort of contemplate this, I will share with you just, and I'm not trying to skew your thinking one way or the other, it's going to sound like I am, but this board historically will never split subdivisions between two schools. So, I think I speak probably for the whole board. It would either mean taking the entire subdivision, including the homes already built, and putting it into a different zone, or taking and doing what we just did, putting the undeveloped portion into the zone, the rest of the subdivisions in. I'm nearly certain, unless there's a change in policy in the board at the end of the election cycle this year, we just never split subdivisions. We want everybody in a subdivision to go to the same school. Okay, thank you, Mr. Dunn. I'm sorry this caught you off guard. All right, Ms. McGowan, next one.
Yes, sir. Our next is the Reserve at Golden Isle. This is a high school that, rezoning that we're talking about. The line is in blue. The area in yellow is the Reserve at Golden Isle. Currently, this area is divided between East River High School and Timber Creek High School. The majority of the development is within the East River High School Zone, and the recommendation is to move the part currently zoned for Timber Creek to East River High School. Our next map shows us the proposed new zones. The area in green would be East River, and the area in pink is Timber Creek.
Thank you, Ms. McGowan. My wife loves to joke that I'm a master of the obvious, but I feel a little chagrin since the audience has just heard what I just said. Just want the audience to know that this subdivision, the part that we're adding in, even though it's currently split between two zones, it's the same situation as the last one. The zone that we are adding into the East River Zone has not yet been developed. It's raw lots and vacant parcels still.
That's correct.
Anybody here from the public to speak on this particular technical rezoning? Board members? All right, Ms. McGowan? There is, yes, ma'am. Welcome, if you could come up to the dais, and if you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. My name is Ava Ramos. I'm at 972 Front in Coin Loop. I've lived in the area for a year prior to moving to this subdivision. I'm an avid bike rider, and I just wanted to reiterate, as I have come to another board meeting to suggest the same, that the roads that the kids will have to travel is, it's a huge safety concern. I know I do avoid it as a bike rider. I went there one time, and that was my last time. So, again, I just wanted to point out the dangers in that area that they'll have to travel. What is it, Sunflower and Old Chaney? There are no sidewalks. Traffic flies through there. It's not a place that a cop would normally sit. You hear random gunshots, day or night. My house is also located behind the Sunflower Road, so unfortunately, I have a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week observation of it. So, again, I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention, and hope that instead of sending the kids to East River High School, that they have the opportunity to go to Timber Creek. It's a huge difference in the route, even though it might be close, 1.9 miles or 2 miles. I know as a community, we measure it 1.9, but I know that it does not go by our measurements. But, like I say, even for after-school activities, I know that those kids will be taking a safer route, going to Timber Creek, so thank you all for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Ramos. And if you could, fill out a yellow card before you leave.
I will.
Ms. McGowan, can I ask you a question before we move off this one?
Yes, sir.
The Reserve at Golden Isle, is it, I don't recall from the workshop, is it currently outside the 2-mile zone for East River? Does it, does, in other words, do they get busing?
I do not remember, sir.
You don't remember either?
Right off the top of my head.
Okay.
I know that part of it is and parts not, but I could not tell you which is.
All right. Let me pause for a minute, because I want to ask Ms. Ramos a question. Let me, let her fill out this card first. Mm-hmm. Did you want to say something?
Well, I just wanted to, there was an excellent presentation last time about this particular area with the bike riding and what have you, and I wanted to try to have someone shake my memory just a little bit, but as I recall, in looking at this, it was very difficult to honor the request, simply because it's attached to a very large neighborhood, and so I couldn't figure out how, I thought the presentation was excellent, and the point made was really, really great, but I couldn't figure out how to do it with the 80% of the neighborhood not going that way. So, is that, is that, is that piece of land here designed so that it's more dangerous than the others, the other part of it, or is it the same basic neighborhood with, is that, what am I missing on this?
Well, you're not, that's why I wanted to wait for Ms. Ramos to finish, because if she wants to comment on it, if she, if it's her pleasure, I wanted to give you that opportunity. We did look very long and hard at this one, and you make a very persuasive case, frankly, for the rightability of this neighborhood to Timber Creek as opposed to East River. What we struggled with, and I don't know if you can comment on it, and I don't think it shows on this map, but if you go to the next map, and if we had a pointer, is that virtually all those neighborhoods up and down that road, and Ms. McGowan, or you can help me, Ms. Ramos, but including those immediately across the street from the golden, from the Reserve at Golden Isle, are in the same boat, and frankly, that's just an attribute in large part of East River being located where it is. In other words, can you take the pointer, Ms. McGowan?
Yes, sir.
And if you, if you look at on that map where the Reserve at Golden Isle, I'm doing it sort of with my own pointer on my screen, all those neighborhoods up and down that road there till you get to Colonial, and that's the only access point to East River. So, we're sympathetic to the argument, but are we right when you, we say that you can make the same argument for that entire swath of the county zoned to East River? And that's what we struggled with when we heard this at the workshop, is the equity of saying, okay, we're just going to take the Reserve at Golden Isle, but we're going to ignore all these other neighborhoods, and at the same time, we can't just depopulate East River by taking that whole swath of the county and moving it out of East River.
Now, may I ask if you are, speaking of the neighborhood on Avalon Park, I guess you're saying across from Avalon Park Boulevard?
I'm actually talking about the neighborhoods directly across the street from the Reserve, and up that road to the north, all the way to the north to Colonial.
Okay, to my understanding, and Chair, somebody correct me if I'm wrong, but I think originally that that neighborhood was originally zoned for Timber Creek at one point, and then it was changed to East River. So, I was hoping that, not to have two wrongs, not to have two wrongs, but to redirect that, you know, and I understand your point as well, with the divisionary line, where do you draw it? Right across the street, but I guess I kind of also looked at, if they were once Timber Creek and ended up at East River, is it possible that we can kind of make a right with our, with our area, with our neighborhood? And just for another notation, there are no kids in my household, but I do realize that the danger's pretty much so. It was worth, well worth just to point that out, but I can also appreciate and recognize the debate and struggle that you all had just the same.
Well, I appreciate your graciousness, I really do, and in all honesty, the semblance is probably not, because at the time we opened East River, I'm doing this off memory, but I think Timber Creek was close to 42, 4,300 students, and a high school built for 2,800, 3,000, and eventually, we understand from the developers, and I can't tell you the name of the road, because I don't live in that area, but there will be eventually an east-west arterial that will cut over to East River, south of 50, south of Colonial, but frankly, a large bulk of the population going to East River has the same dilemma of having to travel along State Road 50 to get there, and, you know, we're sympathetic to it, and we're working with the county partners to make sure we have more sidewalks built, and if we have to provide hazardous condition busing, we will, but it's partly an attribute to where we had to cite that high school, to be candid, which frankly is an ongoing problem for the board.
Right.
As we all know too well right now, citing of high schools, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you all.
Have a good night. Thank you for coming and speaking.
Sure.
Ms. McGowan?
Yes, ma'am. When you're ready.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Moore?
Mr. Chair, I couldn't agree more, because really, what we were dealing with, you know, was a situation again earlier with regard to hazardous busing, and we get into the whole issue that the school district builds schools, and we do not build roads, we don't build sidewalks, and we don't handle all those kinds of issues, and, you know, our government affairs department does a terrific job going to Tallahassee, and of course, now we've been going to Washington, because they're increasingly more involved in public education. But this really is an area of efficiencies and concerns that I think we need to take a greater proactive role in working with the cities and the county, because again, here we are, putting a school in, relieving overcrowding, and we've got problems because of the condition of roads that parents don't always feel safe, and they come to us, and we don't build roads, we don't build sidewalks, we don't supply crossing guards, and we don't put any kind of remediation in terms of speed, because a lot of that is set by governmental agencies outside of the school board. So, I think this is just another case of point of emphasizing that, I think, as an organization, we need to put a little more effort into our meetings with the municipalities to bring to their, because they have the database, they know where sidewalks are missing, but when we are opening up schools, how much are we really collaborating and looking at the major arteries to get there? So, this is a case in point, we open up East River, but how many conversations did we actually have with the county to make sure we didn't have these kinds of problems?
Well, and I'm sure this could open up a floodgate of comments by our board, because we've been living this for six months now, eight months. I think the great frustration of our board, for anybody who may be watching this, is in a perfect world, which we don't live in, but in a perfect world, we would build schools smack dab in the middle of residential walkable neighborhoods. The dilemma we find with high schools and middle schools is neighbors don't want high schools and middle schools built in anymore in the middle of residential neighborhoods, and it drives us batty, as you can tell by my venting and your venting a little bit, because, you know, I live a mile from Boone. If you're, live within a couple miles of Boone, a couple miles of Winter Park, a couple miles of Edgewater, a couple miles of Apopka, you know, and some other schools, there's nothing wrong with having a high school in the middle of your neighborhoods, but we need to figure out a way to convey that to our local government partners, because people then come and get upset that we're building high schools and middle schools in areas that are not walkable, that don't have good, safe sidewalk networks and road infrastructure networks, and it drives us nuts, too. Mr. Rodriguez, or did Ms. Gold want to make a comment? Ms. Gold?
Sorry, that was from earlier, when Mr. Dunn was speaking, but the board members basically expressed my thoughts in that area, so we're covered. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Gold. Ms. McGowan?
Yes, sir. Our next technical rezoning is the Alicante Development. This is a division between two elementary schools. The area in yellow is the Alicante Development. It's currently zoned for both Lakeville and Wheatley Elementary. The majority of the project is within the Lakeville Elementary Zone, and the recommendation is to move the section of the neighborhood in the hash-marked area currently zoned to Wheatley to Lakeville Elementary. If this rezoning is approved, the area in green would represent the new Lakeville Zone, the area in pink would be the new Wheatley Zone.
Thank you. Any public comment on the Alicante Development technical rezoning? Any board member comment? All right, Ms. McGowan?
That concludes the technical rezonings. Did you?
Yes, let's go on to the targeted rezoning. Do we need a separate motion on the technical, Mr. Rodriguez? Okay. Can it just be crafted as a motion to approve the technical rezonance delineated by Agenda Item 3.01?
That would be sufficient.
Okay. Ms. Moore, you want to make that motion?
Okay, so I heard you just say, just to say for all the divisions, the neighborhoods that are in the tech, are technical?
Yeah.
Okay, because I was going to try to read them all. Okay, I would like to make a motion that the board approves for 3.01, all technical, I'm sorry, is it technical or targeted? Technical, okay. Technical rezonings this evening.
It's been moved that we accept all of the technical rezonance delineated in Agenda Item 3.01. It's been seconded by Mrs. Robinson. Is there any debate or discussion on that, Mr. Roach?
You know, we had a workshop on this, but I think for the public's benefit, maybe, could you, Ms. McGowan, explain the, it looks like a gerrymandering thing there with that Clericona Elementary?
Yes, sir.
I just explain why that was, because that looks like what everybody's trying to fight out there with the map.
What you see with the Wheatley Zone here and the Clericona Elementary Zone is a result from our rezoning for the desegregation order about 35 years ago or so. So, this zone has been in place for quite a while, and what we're looking at is this little area right here.
And with the DSEG order lifted, do we still have to have this type of formation? Is it?
Until we bring back to the board to have a rezoning of any sort, then the zone stays until we go through this 12-step processor.
All right. All right, any further debate or discussion on the motion? Everybody know what you're voting for? All right, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Nays, show that motion adopted unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Gold. Okay, we are now on Pittman Estates?
Yes, sir. A targeted rezoning is commenced, well, let me start again. A targeted rezoning, we notify any current students of the impact of this rezoning by U.S. Mail. Under the transfer policy, a family may request a grandfather transfer for a student who is currently attending an existing school and rezoned to another existing school. If the proposed rezonings are approved, then the affected students currently attending Wolf Lake Elementary, Sun Ridge Middle, and Evans High School may apply to remain at that school. No transportation is provided. These targeted rezonings, if approved, the changes would commence in August of 2014. With this in mind, we would open our transfer window for grandfather transfers until July 10th for any families interested. Our first targeted rezoning is Pittman Estates in the Apopka area. The area in yellow is the Pittman Estates neighborhood and area directly west to it going along Poncan Road and Vic Road. The area currently has 60 elementary school students who attend Wolf Lake Elementary. It is recommended to move the students from Wolf Lake Elementary School to Rock Springs Elementary. Our second map shows the new proposed zones. The area in green would be Rock Springs, the area in pink would be Wolf Lake Elementary. We have received no input for this rezoning since our May rural development workshop. Mr. Seblat? Mr. Sublin?
All right, thank you, Ms. McGowan. Mr. and Ms. Farati, I'm not sure which one you're here on. Are you on this one or a different one? Okay, just raise your hand when the one you come up is, because I don't see it here on the card. We do have one speaker on the Pittman Estates rezoning, Mr. Jason Wheaton? Welcome, Mr. Wheaton. If you could start, sir, with your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Jason Wheaton. I'm at 2826 Sheila Drive in Apopka, in the neighborhood of Pittman Estates. I've been here once before, and I'm here to once again oppose the rezoning of Pittman Estates to Rock Springs Elementary. Since Wolf Lake has opened, Pittman Estates has been zoned into this, into the school. There's numerous students who go there, and they're extremely happy with the education they're receiving. You know, one of the things that we talked about last time was, you know, how much Rock Springs Elementary has improved, and we even have a friend who teaches there, and she indicates that as well. But at the end of the day, it's still a C-school, and Wolf Lake Elementary is an A-school. And so this is moving us from the, an A-school to a C-school. And there's no other way to spin that, but that's where we would be moving. And while I agree that Rock Springs has improved, the scores, I haven't seen anything from the grade of the school to show that it's improved to the level of Wolf Lake. So we're obviously opposed to moving us from a school that our children are doing so well at and has such a high rating. And for many people, you know, one of the reasons they moved into Pittman Estates was because of that school. And again, I'm not knocking the work that the teachers do. Like I said, one of our friends works there. So I think that Rock Springs is a beautiful school, I think they've done a great job. But again, it's not the quality that we have right now, and so we don't want to move our kids. I have talked with many of the parents in the Pittman Estates neighborhood, and they all agree that they want to grandfather their children, and they're not, they're not interested in switching their children, not unless they saw an improvement in the grade for Rock Springs Elementary. So I don't see a huge improvement in the numbers that you have if everybody grandfathers their children in, which at this point, you know, the people I've talked to, that's what they've indicated they want to do. So I request that, you know, leave the neighborhood alone until we see improvement. Bring it back up again, and then let the people speak, because I don't think you're going to get the opposition at that point. And if Rock Springs gets better, I'm more than happy to send my child there, but for right now, I want to keep them at Wolf Lake Elementary. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Wheaton, for your testimony. All right, board members, any comments or questions on this proposed technical rezoning?
Targeted.
I'm sorry, my mistake. Targeted, thank you, Mrs. Robinson. This particular targeted rezoning. All right, Mr. Rodriguez, do we need to take these up individually by motion since they're targeted rezonings, or do we take them in bulk?
That would be the recommendation on the targeted ones as opposed to the technical ones.
Okay. And again, just to remind the members of the public, by this point, we've had two workshops on these proposed rezonings. And, Mr. Wheaton, in fairness to you, he does reflect the views of a number of speakers who are not happy with this proposed rezoning. But we'll take a motion at this time. Ms. Moore moves to approve this targeted rezoning of the Pittman Estates neighborhood area. It's been seconded by Mrs. Robinson. Is there any further debate or discussion on that motion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nays. All opposed, nays. Show the motion adopted unanimously. Ms. McGowan, can you do me a favor before you go to the next?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, are you counting me in that also?
You're a yea on that?
Well, the last three, last from the Timber Creek, when you first started in, I think with Ms. Moore.
Okay, Mrs. Gordon.
I don't, I'm not showing, I'm not showing it. I came in at 6:35.
Thank you, Mrs.
So I need the record to reflect on any of the technical and targeted that I'm in favor of.
Thank you, Mrs. Gordon. All right, Ms. Rodriguez, we could reflect, or Ms. McGill, she was a yea, Mrs. Gordon, on the technical rezoning, and was a yea on the Pittman Estates rezoning as well.
Right.
Thank you, Mrs. Gordon. Thank you for calling in.
Thank you. Thank you. I sent a text, but I guess everybody's busy, so, okay.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Gordon.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Ms. McGowan?
Yes, sir.
Next one.
Okay. Our next targeted rezoning includes the areas of the Willows and the Butler Bay neighborhood. They're shown in yellow. This is for middle school. There are currently 20, boy, there are currently 27 middle school students that reside within the yellow area that attend Sunridge Middle School. The recommendation is to move the area from Sunridge Middle School to Bridgewater Middle School. Our second map shows the areas, if this is approved, the area in green would be the new Bridgewater, the area in pink would be Sunridge. We have received no input on this rezoning, sir.
Is there any member of the public who has arrived tonight to testify on the Willows and Butler Bay area? Ms. Farati, welcome, ma'am. I hope I pronounced your name right, Victoria.
Yes.
Welcome. If you could start, Ms. Farati, with your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Victoria Farati, and I'm on 11318 Winston Willow Court in the Willows. And I'm here to show that I strongly object to the plan of changing the zoning from the Willows, from Sunridge to Bridgewater. Since the beginning of my sixth grade year, I've made tons of friends, and most of them have become really close to me. I could even call them family. But the problem is that you can't take me away from my family. It isn't right. When I, I remember the first day of middle school, I didn't know my way around, I barely had any friends, I didn't know where my classes were, and I didn't really like the fact that my back was literally moaning in pain after each one of my steps. But you must realize that I can't go through that again. I'm used to Sunridge. I know every teacher's expectations. I know what supplies I have to bring to school so my back doesn't kill me. Of course, I'll find those things out at Bridgewater, but it will take time. Quite frankly, it took me nine months to find these out at my current school, and I don't want another first day of middle school all over again. In my chorus class, my class and practically everyone has worked very hard. My chorus instructor said I will be in one of the most advanced classes next year. I'll either be in Sunridge Singers or Bocanto. And I really need to do these classes, but I can't be a Sunridge singer if I go to Bridgewater. At MPA, Music Performance Assessment, there is a grading scale that goes from poor to good to excellent to superior, superior being the highest. Sunridge classes got straight superiors during our music tests. Bridgewater did not. I've worked very hard. But the real question here is, how many times are you going to switch the zoning? A couple of years ago, everyone in middle school in the Willows went to Bridgewater. Now we're going to Sunridge. Will you make us go back to Bridgewater again? Since you're thinking about rezoning the Willows for Bridgewater because of requests, you should think of years in the future. If you change us to Bridgewater and people request to go back to Sunridge, will you listen? If you listen next year, then it would be fair to listen next year. If you keep changing our schools, there will be no consistency. You zoned me for Sunridge, so I'm going to Sunridge. Since our zoning for Gotha, no one has been zoned for a full three years at one school. What a few people request should not affect everyone. If a few people want to go to Bridgewater, then they should get their own transportation to go there. I can't imagine myself at Bridgewater because Sunridge is my home.
Ms. Farati, thank you. That was excellent testimony, and you're setting a great role model example for your peers. Ms. McGowan, can I ask a question? If I recall right from this targeted rezoning, this is the one where we initially struggled with it when we did the original zoning for Sunridge, and then
That is correct, sir.
Then we get a pretty strong expression of support from this neighborhood that they wanted to because of transportation
They wanted
accessibility to go back to Bridgewater.
Wanted to stay at Bridgewater. It was brought back as a targeted at that point, and the families didn't come at that time. And so it was stopped at that point after the rural development. And so we told the families that at a different time, we could bring it back. And then the families asked us to bring it back, so we did.
Okay. And Mrs. Robinson reminds me, too, it was a feeder pattern issue as well, wasn't it?
You don't mention it.
Going to the same schools.
Yes, ma'am. The, this area in green that we're talking about go to Windermere Elementary, and they're the only piece of Windermere Elementary that go to Sunridge. And so with this rezoning, then we take a larger group from Windermere Elementary to Bridgewater.
Okay. All right, Ms. Farati, again, your testimony was excellent, and I want to say as well, and you're a very bright young woman, that's clear, you do have the opportunity to continue going to Sunridge if you choose to. Admittedly, your parents would have to transport you, but thank you for your testimony tonight. Ms. Moore?
I've actually met her music teacher. She was up for top chorus teacher in the county when we had the awards down at town at the Grand Bohemian, so you definitely had a wonderful teacher. I think it's exciting that this school's only been in existence for two years, and it's that loved, and I hear there's some exciting things coming from Dr. Williams about their school grades have really been excellent. So I think the concern, you know, is changing, I mean, this was a request coming one way, and now they like it, so it's probably a good lesson for us to be careful. You know, once people like our schools, they like them. It's just change that becomes hard. So you understand you could still stay if you like, if Dad's sitting there, will drive you every day, you can still stay. Oh, he can't do it? Oh, okay. Wow, that's, yeah. Have you looked into carpool? There might be a couple of other kids who've started that want to stay, because I know they all still go to West Orange High School. So do we, have we had any, Ms. McGowan, have we had the correspondence back and forth with this original request? Is there any sense of, you know, of course, we had only heard the positive for about two years, and now we have this young lady telling us.
We have had no information from any family member since we met in May.
And what are the, now, I know that at Sunridge, we're starting to get portables. And we opened it up, what, two years ago, and we're heading to it? We have one, if I'm correct. And so does this move have anything to do with the numbers between Bridgewater and Sunridge, and when we expand? I know we have to probably have a relief school for Bridgewater. That's Mrs. Gould's district, and she's still listening, she might be able to help. But what is, what are we looking at?
This was not in regards to the capacity at either school. It was to clean up that feeder pattern, so that the 27 students, 37 students who go to Sunridge from Windermere would have the opportunity to stay with the elementary students that they were friends with into Bridgewater, and then they all go to West Orange.
All right. Mr. Rodriguez, I have a question for you. There's no way to modify this motion, is there? Because it's been advertised a certain way. You know, what I'm saying, is there a way to, because I think it makes sense long-term to keep the children in their feeder patterns. I mean, that makes complete sense, but I also understand her point that now we moved her to have to move her back. Is there a way to modify the motion at all and start it in, you know, a year from, are you in seventh grade, honey? She's going into seventh. Is there any way to modify the motion at this point?
Again, just like with the other rezonings, you're asking, I mean, you're being asked tonight to vote up or down on the changes as you see these here. And if you choose to make any changes from that, you're going to basically reinitiate the process. So what impact that has, you know, going into the next school year, obviously, I would assume, Ms. McGowan, that these changes take effect before the 14, 15 year? Is that correct?
I'm sorry, say that again.
These changes would take effect before the 14, 15 school year, is that correct?
Yes, these are for 14, 15.
Yeah, so effectively, I think if you, if this gets voted down tonight, you'll remain in place, but for the 14, 15 year, you're not going to be able to notice and advertise and get it back to the board in a timely manner, so you're just going to be delaying it for a year at least.
Okay, I'd like to reserve comments until I hear from some of the other board members.
Thank you. Mr. Rodriguez?
Ms. Gould.
Ms. Gould?
Yes, ma'am.
Gould?
Thank you. I am in complete sympathy and empathy with this young lady's wonderful testimony, and she did a phenomenal job. But I have had a lot of contact, especially with the Butler Bay and some of the Willows community, and my sense is that there are a large number of people over the years that have been very concerned about the feeder pattern and breaking that up. And I'm hoping that her transportation problems can be resolved, because I think these individual cases are very, very tough, but unfortunately, we have to make decisions for the larger body often. But, you know, certainly, anything that I can do to help, to try to help with carpooling and put you in contact with folks, I'm happy to do.
Thank you, Ms. Gould. Mr. Roach?
Well, I was just trying to build on Mrs. Moore's concern, and wondering, do you have to re-advertise the whole darn thing if you just simply do the grandfathering situation, which I think that's what it was, just allow the kids who have already been to their school for a year? Is that, that's already in there? So this, this young lady then would be allowed to stay?
Correct.
Well, does that make you happy, or what? I don't know, I thought that's the way, the way she was.
I think you should be looking at Dad, not.
Well, Dad will take her.
Or.
At least there's a pulse here, right? Okay.
All right, board members, any other comments or questions? Well, at this time, we would need a motion, then. Ms. Gould, it's your district, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I would like to move that we do the targeted rezoning for Butler Bay and the Willows.
Okay. It's been moved by Ms. Gould that we approve the targeted rezoning for Butler Bay area and the Willows. It's been seconded by Mrs. Robinson. Any debate or discussion on that motion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
That motion passes by a vote of five to one. All right, we're on to the next one.
Yes.
Who was the one?
Our final one, I believe, is the Evans High School, Jones High School targeted rezoning.
I'm sorry, it was five to one, who, I mean, who was the one?
It was, I had a yea for Mrs. Gordon, Ms. Gould, Mrs. Robinson, myself, the chair, Mr. Roach, all were yays, and then I had one nay, Ms. Moore.
Oh, okay. I thought Ms. Moore explained it, though. I thought Ms. Moore, okay, all righty, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Gordon. Okay. Board members, if I misstate the vote at all, of course, you'll let me know, you always do. Miss McGowan?
Yes, sir. The next area is a targeted rezoning for students who are currently attending Evans High School. It's the area in yellow. The northern part is Highway 50 or Colonial Drive. Then you have Mercy Drive and, I lost my place. Mercy Drive, and then you come down, it's Raleigh, and then on the west side is Kirkman Road. There are approximately 530 high school students who reside in this area, and approximately 300 of them are currently attending Evans High School. The recommendation is to rezone this area from Evans High School to Jones High School. Our second map shows us what the school zones would be if this proposal is accepted. The area in pink will be Jones High School, the area in green would be Evans High School. We have received input from one student who wishes to remain at Evans and for this rezoning not to occur. Mr. Sublin?
All right, thank you, Ms. McGowan. I do have one speaker on this, before I go to board members. Mr. Robert Jackson, Mr. Jackson, sir? Mr., I'm sorry, I misspoke, forgive me. That's on a different agenda item, my mistake. Do I have any public speakers on this proposed targeted rezoning? I do not. Mrs. Gordon, do you want to say anything on this before we take a motion on this one? Or do you want to make a motion?
What I would do, I would like to yield to Ms. Robinson because of her kindness and trying to help us out, and so we could get our foot together and then help her out a little bit. So I would like to hear from her, and then I will make a comment.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Gordon. Mrs. Robinson?
Thank you.
Thank you, Kat. Thank you, Ms. Gordon, I appreciate that. Yes, I'm in total favor of this. Evans numbers just keep getting larger and larger. We opened the school, brand spanking new school, in January of '12, and by August, we already had portables, and we had to add more portables this year. So Evans is getting larger, Jones continually just stays at the same number, and we need to send some students there to help them out so that Jones can stay viable. And so I think it's a wonderful win-win for everybody, and I'm just thankful to you. And so I think it's a wonderful win-win for everybody and I'm just thankful to you, Ms. Gordon, that you're in favor of it also.
Well, I really want to thank you, Ms. Robinson, for this and working with us through the work sessions and the chairman and the entire board. And I want... Ms. Robinson and I also wanted to point out, Mr. Roach may not be aware, but Ms. Simpson is, that there are some students, they attend other schools, even Boone High within that area. And I wanted her to address that for whatever reason, if they were in a magnet or whatever it is, that those students will be able to continue to go if they... If their paperwork was in. So, Mr. Chairman, if you would ask Ms. Simpson to address that for me, please.
Yes, I will. Mrs. McGowan?
Yes, sir. If a student is any school on a transfer and they're in the area we're talking about, the transfer would continue. If they're at a charter school, then they would continue at that charter school. So we would not be taking away the choice that the family made earlier or saying that students who are going to start attending high school or currently that are going to move into the area would go to Jones. And students that are currently attending Evans could... Would then be Jones... I'm sorry. Would then be rezoned to Jones.
Okay. And then with that in mind, Mr. Chairman, I would like to know, you know, the feeling of the other board members as well, since this is the final date for the targeted for Evans and Jones.
Okay. Board members, anybody else want to comment? I mean, I support this targeted rezoning. I think it probably will be unanimous, Mrs. Gordon.
Thank you.
All right. With that, can I have a motion to approve this targeted rezoning? It's been moved by Mrs. Robinson.
And seconded by Ms. Gordon.
Seconded by Vice Chair Gordon. Is there any...
Thank you.
Is there any debate or discussion on that motion? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Show that motion adopted unanimously.
Thank you, board members. I know we'll be proud of all three of the schools.
Thank you, Vice Chair Gordon. All right. We are now done with the targeted and technical rezonings. Board members, we are now on the consent agenda. I am going to pull off the consent agenda and move to Agenda Item 14... Excuse me. 16.01, the matter of RJ. Matter of RJ, that's a student discipline matter that's, I believe, will be contested. Just so that student family knows, we typically take those up after we adopt the consent agenda here. So we are now on the consent agenda. And on the consent agenda, we have one very momentous item to talk about, which is the approval of the renaming of the cafeteria at Eccleston Elementary. And we are naming it in honor of one of the legends of our community, Mr. Rufus Brooks. And I do have a speaker on that issue. So before we say much more, let me go to that speaker. And that is Dr. Minnie Woodruff. Dr. Woodruff, welcome, ma'am. Thank you for coming to talk to us tonight. And I want to thank all the folks in the audience, many of whom are good friends of ours who are showing up tonight in recognition of this honor. Dr. Woodruff, we'll pause for a moment to get those. But you know the routine. You're well-versed in it. But if you could start with your name and address when you're comfortable, ma'am, whenever you're ready. Well, the man of the hour just joined us, so we're going to pause for a moment for Mr. Brooks to come down.
I live at 614 Cedar Forest Circle, Orlando. Mr. Chairman, Honorable School Board, Orange County. And I say that with pride, the Honorable School Board. Dr. Barbara Jenkins, Superintendent, school officials, and friends of Orange County students. Again, my name is Minnie Boya Woodruff and I'm a product of Orange County schools, from Winter Park Day Nursery to a proud career as a student, as a teacher at two elementary schools and as a principal of three elementary schools, retiring from John Young Elementary School about a decade ago. The great Horace Mann once said, "Be ashamed to die until you have won a victory for mankind." Our purpose for being here tonight is to say thanks to each of you for the approval of the naming of the elementary school at Eccleston Elementary School here in Orlando. Rufus C. Brooks Cafeteria. Nearly a year ago, a group of retired teachers, but not retired persons, from the early days at Eccleston came together to honor our leader, Mr. Brooks. Specifically, it was about 1959 to 1961. That's about 55 years ago, when we were all 25 and Mr. Brooks was 26. We were all excited about our first teaching jobs and Mr. Brooks was as excited about his first principalship as all of the newly appointed principals here tonight. What I remember is that there was electricity through that building that's no longer there. And we followed his lead and his concern and in our concern for the lives of children. At the top of the year back in January, we all came together and hosted an appreciation activity which we called Brunch with Brooks. Over 300 former teachers, students, civic officials, school board personnel, including Vice Chair Gordon and Superintendent Jenkins, came out to acknowledge and express our appreciation to this giant in education. Each one came with a story of Mr. Brooks's personal interaction, influence, and resolve. Dr. James Talbert, former Associate Superintendent, commented that day that Mr. Brooks may not have always followed the policy book to the letter, but that his heart was always in the right place and there was no misunderstanding about his care and concern for children. At the end of the school day, when most principals went home to read the newspaper, Mr. Brooks started all over again, giving back to the community as he was a member of about 30 different organizations. We are here tonight because Mr. Brooks has left his mark on the minds and hearts of thousands of us. We've all come back. We're school administrators. We're politicians. We're ministers. We're law enforcement officers. We're radio personalities and a school superintendent. And we're all contributing citizens based on the influence of this one man. So too are we the dwarfs astride the shoulders of giants. We master their wisdom and we move beyond it. At this time, I'd like to ask the steering committee, there are 13 of us, who came together to honor Mr. Brooks. Would you stand, the steering committee, please? Mrs. June H. Baker, Mrs. Myrtle Random, Mrs. Delma Edwards Wallace, Mrs. Eddie K. Walden, Ms. Alfreda Gary, Mrs. Dolores Salisbury, Mrs. Patricia H. Wilkins, Mrs. Marjorie T. Wolford, Mrs. Gloria J. Henry, Mr. Henry Charlton, Mrs. Virginia Wilson, and yours truly, Minnie Boya Woodruff. We collectively brought to the children 450 years of dedicated service. We were with one leader at the same time 55 years ago. Our sincere gratitude is extended to Mrs. Tracy Webble, Principal of Eccleston Elementary School, who said, "You got to choose the cafeteria because that's where his legacy is." The Advisory Council of Eccleston Elementary School, Dr. Barbara Jenkins, Dr. Kathy Schuler, and the family of Mr. Rufus C. Brooks. Would you stand, please? His lovely wife, Mrs. Edith Brooks. Dr. Bridget... Dr. Bridget Brooks-Williams, the lovely daughter. Mr. Byron Brooks, I believe I did see him. And Mr. Brandon Brooks. But mostly, we want to thank you, Mr. Brooks. If I can say this, in my church, we sing a song that says, "Let the work I've done speak for me. You are the wind beneath my wings." One day soon, and hopefully very soon, a cherry picker will be sent out to Eccleston Elementary School on Aaron Avenue to attach the sign, "Rufus C. Brooks Cafeteria," at the very top. It will be perched high enough for all the world to see. All of you, his wife, his children, his grandchildren, his great-grandchildren, your great-grandchildren, and my great-grandchildren. A job well done and carried out with purpose is a job well done forever. Thank you again. Did everybody get a chance to see Mr. Brooks?
Well, Dr. Woodruff, remind me to never follow you as a speaker. And the congregation said, "Amen." I'm going to break protocol a little bit here, but I know she will not be at a loss for words. But it is said sometimes, Mr. Brooks, that a man's greatest legacy are his children. You've left behind some wonderful legacies. So I'd like to first go to one of our stars, Dr. Bridget Williams, to see if she'd like to say anything, one of our area superintendents. And, Dr. Williams, I'm sorry, I know I didn't tell you I was going to do this, but we're so proud of you and I know your father is as well. And I wanted to start with you, ma'am.
Thank you. On behalf of my family, thank you for this very special honor. My dad is not feeling well. But if you don't mind, Dad, would you please stand so that they can see you? He was actually... He was released from the hospital this morning.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Let me go to Vice Chair Gordon. Vice Chair Gordon?
Well, I thank you so very much. And I would like to thank Ms. Minnie Woodruff. I would like to thank her so much for the hard work that the steering committee... And I am familiar with everyone on that steering committee and had the opportunity to work with every single educator on that committee in one way or another. I do want to say that Marjorie Wolford, I always talk about Marjorie because her husband was very instrumental, helping us during the civil rights movements that we had during the '60s. And Eccleston was even involved with that. He was one of the main attorneys. And she was also the librarian at Eccleston. And I always talk about that. And we were all given an opportunity to... Well, they were telling us that we would have to leave. And it was very difficult at that time because they ended up even pulling our names. But I had the opportunity of working for Mr. Brooks as well, as all of the beautiful ladies and men that you see out there in the audience. And I told this at the luncheon, that the 13 wonderful people on the steering committee put together. And I said to the Brooks family, "Mr. Brooks saved me because I would not be where I am today. He is one of the main forces." Because when they let me go and did not want to hire me back, Mr. Brooks took me in at Eccleston as his librarian. And I was very grateful to Marjorie Wolford for that and to Mr. Rufus Brooks and will be eternally grateful to him for giving me that opportunity to shine as a librarian. So, Mr. Brooks, I say to you, I had my way. You would be the name of the school. I asked the committee way before the steering committee even got together, when we knew that the sale text had passed and when Mr. Blocker and the board put it out there, we decided that it would be a great thing to look at the naming of the schools. And several of the school board members, we went back and looked at how we would name schools and what we would do and what people. So I want you all to know, we considered, even the school board considered, the renaming of Eccleston. And that was brought before the faculty and the staff, not just the cafeteria in itself, because of Mr. Brooks' legacy to Eccleston. Mr. Brooks, Mr. Boston, and Mr. Walden, those were... And Felton Johnson, those were men, along with Mr. Evans, that really carried the African-American community and the elementary school. He is well honored, even with the school being named after him. But the steering committee chose to ask for the cafeteria. And I'm asking the board tonight with my vote that we go ahead and award this honor to Mr. Brooks and his wonderful family for the hard work that he has done and how he has loaned his wife and all of his children to the education of the children in Orange County. So with that in mind, Mr. Chairman, if there are no other comments, I will wait and I would move this motion through to the board.
Thank you, Mrs. Gordon. Well, I will show you as a maker of that motion and I will take the privilege of seconding that motion myself as the chair.
Thank you.
We do have some additional speakers. So before we take up that motion, Mrs. Gordon, Mr. Roach?
Well, I wanted to say to Mr. Brooks, what a wonderful fellow you are and a great, great member of our community. I think this is a well-deserved honor on your part. I'll... Just a little piece of trivia, he probably never would remember, but my first move to Orlando, my wife worked for him for one year. It was an interesting thing. And then she began raising kids. But that was an interesting thing. And Minnie Woodruff, I want you to know, you're also an icon in this community. And at John Young Elementary, there's a plaque in front of the school with Minnie Woodruff's name on it and some of her accomplishments. And, Mr. Morris, when we build that new school, we just got to have Ms. Woodruff out there and we've got to move that plaque over to the front of the new school because it's just beautiful. I think you'd be very, very proud of it. So tonight, we have a lot of special people in the room and I wanted to make sure that got taken care of. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Roach. Dr. Jenkins?
Thank you, Chairman. I certainly wouldn't let this opportunity pass without adding my congratulations to Mr. Brooks. He was my very first principal. These great teachers who put in so many years for our young people were peers of my first grade teacher, whom I loved, who really inspired me to go into education. Of course, she's not living anymore, but that's Octavia Gignard. And Mr. Brooks always had phenomenal teachers that worked for him. Part of his legacy is inspiring a sense of urgency to young people in getting a good education. And I told the group at the brunch, I won't repeat everything I said at that event, one particular comment regarding Byron, but I will tell you, at the brunch, I told them, I really still attribute Mr. Brooks to my older brother, who is a retired Lieutenant Colonel from the Air Force, to his success. Because when he was a young student, he didn't think learning his timetable was all that critical until Mr. Brooks put... think learning his timetable was all that critical, until Mr. Brooks put before him the challenge that a failure to do so might result in a paddling. And I will tell you, he never would have gone through with that, but he got my brother's attention. He learned his multiplication tables without failure after that little conversation. So I attribute his success and so many other young people, many that were at the event that day. The lives that this man has touched are just innumerable, and I want to add my congratulations and my commendations to him as well, and congratulations to his family. The cafeteria is appropriate for placing his name, because anyone who went through Eccleston Elementary School knows full well, when Mr. Brooks entered the building, and the noise level was too loud, and he always had classical music playing in the background because he wanted us to be cultivated, and there'd be music in the background, you couldn't hear the music. Honestly, you could not. But three claps of the hand, a rub across his head, and the phrase, "I can't hear my music," still is in the minds of the students that went through Eccleston Elementary School because a dead silence would fall over the entire room. "I can't hear my music." We remember that so well. I look forward to seeing that name go up on the cafeteria. Congratulations, Mr. Brooks. Thank you again for all that you have done. I know you're not feeling well, but I'll run back there to give you a hug later. Thank you for all your years of service, and thank you to your entire family as they sacrificed your time and your energies toward making so many young people better for this community.
Well, Mr. Brooks, I just want to say that if you have any good stories about the young Barbara Jenkins for us, we will pay you many times over for those. We need some coin each to use on occasion. I also want to thank our retired Eccleston teachers for staying together and continuing to be a force for Orange County Public Schools. It's greatly appreciated, and the sense of camaraderie that you have fostered in your teachers and your students, Mr. Brooks, is nothing short of remarkable. I would be remiss in not recognizing Byron Brooks, who I see in the back as well. Bridgette, forgive me, but are there other siblings back there? I know you and Byron, I don't know. Can the other siblings raise their hand, or grandchildren? Or can we just have all the Brooks family stand up for us, and let us recognize you collectively if we could? And I will just close by saying this. I echo what Mrs. Gordon said, Vice Chair Gordon. I think it would be wonderful if we could find a way to name a school after Mr. Brooks one day. We certainly are opening enough of them, and I think that we need to honor our legends. And, Mr. Brooks, I wish you the best. I hope you feel better, sir. I know you came down here today and you were not feeling all that well, but thank you for coming down here, and thank you for all you have done for the children of Orange County and these many teachers and the legacy you have left, sir. Thank you very, very much.
So with that in mind, Mr. Chairman, I move the approval.
All right. Mrs. Gordon has moved the approval of Agenda Item 7.01. All those, and it's been seconded by Mr. Roach and myself, all those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All of us. Show it adopted unanimously. All right, board members, we are -- let's pause for a moment, let the family filter All right, board members, we are now on the overall consent agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? It's been moved by Ms. Moore, seconded by Mrs. Robinson. Is there any debate or discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Nay. Show that adopted unanimously. Mr. Rodriguez, do you have a report?
Well, I'm actually just gonna -- I don't have a report, Mr. Chair. We have a number of legal issues that are gonna be decided between now and the July meeting, and I'll be sending you an update on that. I do want to say that we are trying to get ahold of Ms. Gould to see if we can get her to drop the call, but it's been unsuccessful. So, Ms. Gordon, we're trying to get ahold of Ms. Gould so you get rid of the music.
We're done with the business portion. Can we just disconnect? We can't do that without disconnecting, Mrs. Gordon, can we?
That is correct, and then if we --
Okay, never mind. Never mind. Okay. All right. Do you have anything else to report, Mr. Rodriguez?
Not at this time, thank you.
Okay. Dr. Jenkins?
I mentioned earlier in pre-agenda that we'll be in touch with individual board members. We still have one, two, three, four additional principal positions to fill due to transfers or promotions, and so we will be in touch with individual board members for placements at Inglewood, Tildenville, Eccleston, and Gotha. That's all, Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. Communications, Ms. Moore.
Yes, I really had to report that we've been pretty busy and working on some new communications plans. I know we had talked about last time about each board member meeting with teachers, so that was in the works. And our last meeting, and several of you were not able to attend, we worked on our skill set in terms of social media, and we'll be working with Kathy Putnam to push out into our communities a whole set of talking points and things all summer long. And so we looked at sending you the talking points, whether it be a video, a picture, a quote, an article by Wednesday of the week, and hoping that you can push it out through your Facebook pages on Thursdays. And the next meeting, we're gonna be talking about how to build those lists, because really, in the next six months, a lot of communication is gonna come directly from the board out to your parents and your community. So it's gonna be a time that it's really important for us to follow up with these types of emails. So I just want to call your attention to it, and we'll be continuing to have meetings about every two weeks. So, thank you. It's been a busy time, but appreciate your support.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Moore, for all your work with that. Board members, I don't have any other committee reports. Any agenda items you'd like me to tee up for work sessions or future meetings? Ms. Moore?
I mentioned it earlier, and I don't know if the superintendent will consider it, that we need a work session. Maybe it's just reporting back, and I'd had a conversation with Mr. Eugene about how we can coordinate when we are about -- we have new schools coming online, or we're going to take some routes off the hazardous bus route, that part of the procedures would be to notify the municipality so we can engage them as a bigger partner in ensuring that our students get to school safely, and that the taxpayers are having their children to be safe at the lowest possible cost to them. So I don't know if that would require a work session or us figuring out some procedure or getting together, staff getting together with the municipalities, but whatever you think, that would be an issue I have of concern today.
Yeah. Dr. Jenkins?
I would agree with you, Ms. Moore, that the discussions certainly need to be held. I don't think it's weighty enough for an entire work session. I will tell you that we do have coordination, because the crossing guards have to be hired by the municipalities, but we can certainly have more advanced notice and more discussions. I think we're going to have to -- one of our most critical issues, and Mr. Roach dealt with it in his area, is when crossing guard positions are left unfilled, because then that does place the burden back on the school system. And so we've got to have a more lengthy conversation with our municipalities around helping us make sure we have those crossing guards in place. I think that's the number-one issue that we have to deal with, and that doesn't require a work session. The coordination that goes on currently is why we have crosswalks or flashing lights and things put in place when we build new schools. That is due to the coordination, where we can stress the need for assistance is around unfilled crossing guard positions. I think that's critical. And we'd like to have further discussion around sidewalks when the county or different municipalities have the resources where they can assist us, because as I stated earlier, the state's at the four-foot walkway, so they won't provide any sidewalks. We want to up those conversations with our municipalities as well.
Ms. Moore?
I agree, because I know from the research, I had worked on this a number of years ago and was successful with Commissioner Brummer and getting some sidewalks constructed, and he actually, with accounting, graciously with our permission, completed about a 15-foot pathway onto our property for Wakava High School, where the children would get off on Hiawassee Road, and they were cutting up, and it was something that the principal had really requested. And because they were doing some other, they actually went ahead and did that for us. It was really very gracious of them. But what I found at the time was, just the nature of our organization, we do not maintain a grid of where sidewalks are, because that's not, you know, our role, but the municipalities do. And so it would be my hope that we could somehow turn the corner on the understanding and get them to be bigger partners, because they have that data, we do not, and that they would come to the table to help with sidewalks. They were very inexpensive, I cannot remember what it was, per linear foot, but when you look at a permanent sidewalk going on in perpetuity to an annual expenditure for this board for hazardous busing, there is no comparison in the cost, and it's the same taxpayer. So instead of us being the bad guys and denying hazardous busing, we need to maybe take the lead and gently prod these municipalities to come to the table for a solution that is certainly safer for children and more cost-effective. So I do think we need to have some sort of change in procedures, because it just doesn't, isn't seemingly working at this point. Thank you.
Did you want to comment on that, Ms. Roach?
Well, I just wanted to weigh in, because Dr. Jenkins brought up, I'm sure, the Durant situation, which you were talking about, and this safety issues, and it really is, it's frustrating to know you have an unsafe situation, and you wait for other people to fix it. And so I think you have a great point. We've got to, I'll steal your all's words here, drill down here and find ways -- now, the good news at Durant's, I don't know if they ever got a crossing guard, but I do know, when I went by there, they did put in a 20 mile-per-hour speed limit, I think. I'm just like, how hard could that have been? You know, I don't even want to talk, I don't want to hear money. We finally have cars, instead of going 45 and 55 miles an hour, slowing down to that 20, so kids can not have to play Dodge cars. And we have faculty members who are illegally going out in that street playing crossing guard. And so I think whatever we did, Dr. Jenkins, you and I, the pressure we tried to apply at least produced that, and I think they cut down the tree that was blocking the school crossing sign as well. So we just got to keep screaming, but there needs to be something sometime soon, because I've been sitting here for years with the same problem. We've got to be able to take charge and fix this for kids. God forbid one of them should get hurt, and I'm still trying to find an answer for it. So, good for you, Ms. Moore. Keep the pressure on, keep your foot on the pedal.
Well, I'll just chime in. You know, we went through this a couple of years ago, I think, with identifying some potentially hazardous conditions, where we decided to provide busing for middle school students. You know, I think the administration and the board knows my position on this. If a board member brings us what is clearly a dangerous walking condition, I personally don't care if the kid is eight, 14, or 17. I'm gonna vote to spend 40,000, 50,000, or 60,000 to bus that child unequivocally across the board. And I'll be candid, I don't care if it adds up to a million dollars a year. I really don't, because to me, a million dollars in your $1.6 billion budget is spit in the bucket, and if we have to do that to bus every child who has a dangerous walking condition, we do so. You know, any board member who brings a hazardous condition to this board, I will vote for providing busing. I really will. And I would hope the board members would bring that to the board, you know, but I'm confident we'll work through it when they do. All right.
I wanted to take a minute to say congratulations and goodbye to Mr. Rudzik. Sorry, not yet?
No, I've started to do it twice.
So he has another -- you're gonna be here in July? Oh, good. Well, I'm not trying to kick you out soon. I just made an assumption that today was it. Okay. Never mind, forget it. I'll hold all my comments till July.
All right. Anything else for the good of the order? All right, everybody have a -- Dr. Jenkins, anything? Everybody have a wonderful July. I think we've earned a break.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry.
Yes?
Ms. Gordon?
Mrs. Gordon, did you want to say something?
Can you not hear me?
No.
Oh, my God. I think Woody muted me.
No.
Oh, Mrs. Gordon, we're all yours. Bring us in for a landing.
Okay, somebody turned me off. I think you did, Bill. Did you turn me off?
We don't have the control here, Ms. Gordon, but we can hear you.
Oh, well, how come nobody heard me when they were making, after the general counsel's
You know, I think it's the music is probably, when you have two people on a conference call phone at one time, Mrs. Gordon, whatever music that is coming from is overriding your voice.
Well, what happened when Ms. Gould hung up? When she hung up, she didn't disconnect, and it just left, you know how you hang up and then it goes over to another line? And I didn't want to get off the line, because the first time she hung up, it disconnected us, and then she came back on, and she was talking, and then when she got off, it put the music on. But I just wanted you to know that I have two reports in the 1901. Under there, one is from the FSDA. I don't know if Nancy addressed any of it, from the annual spring conference that was held in Tampa for all of us that did attend. I don't know if Nancy was able to speak to it as a director, but there is a full report of the annual conference under 19.01. And then also, there is a community action board report. And I don't know if they gave you the information that I brought back that they would like for us to do from the National School Board, from the southern region. So I don't know, Mr. Chairman, were the board members, and you able to get that information?
We will make sure that it gets out to all the board members, Mrs. Gordon.
Well, I'll get, no, the other two reports, the Florida School Board Association and the community action board report is in the board doc.
Are you asking if it is, or are you asking us to get it out there?
No, I'm letting you know it is there.
Oh, it is? Okay, thank you, Mrs. Gordon. I didn't know that.
Okay. And then I did not know if they gave you the information that we brought back from the southern region in Savannah.
On board docs.
It's on board docs, I'm told.
No, that's not on board docs. The Savannah is not on board docs.
It's not, okay.
Only community action and the Tampa Florida School Board of Directors meeting and the conference.
Mrs. --
But I'll make sure that we get it and they can give it to you at the next board meeting.
Ms. Miller tells us she's gonna get us a notebook of the material.
Okay.
It's on our desk already, I'm sorry. I'm trying to read Mrs. Miller's lips from across the room, Mrs. Gordon. It's on our desk already.
Okay. All righty. Okay, thank you so much. I just wanted you all to have it there. Asking us to do quite a bit, so I do need to bring you up to date on that, but the information is there for you to look at.
Thank you, thank you.
And up here, they're asking us to do quite a bit with the President. So we met with part of the President's cabinet today, and they are asking us, with my Brother's Keepers and the African-American Mail, and I think we are already ahead of that, Dr. Jenkins and her staff, with Dr. Lawson, we've been working on that already. It doesn't appear to be any money in his account, but there are some things that Ms. Robinson would need to know that would help the Eatonville community. We found, and the Apopla community, there are grants and funds available through the President's office that no one knows about, and no one -- we're meeting with all of the black mayors and the judicial, the representative for African-American judges in the United States, and all of the black legislators, over 666 of them, but they're meeting with the leaders and the chairman and the cherry pick of those, and that's why I'm here, for the National School Board Association. But there's information that will help us on the local level that no one has even brought to our attention, that you can apply for, so I will get that information to you as soon as I return.
Well, thank you, and thank you for representing our interests, Mrs. Gordon. Have a safe trip.
Well, thank you so very much also. Thank you.
All right. With that, we are adjourned.
Cute. He's already surrounded by --